Councilman Woods, would you please get an indication?
Oh gracious and virtual Father, we first and foremost, Lord, give you thanks. Father God, we thank you, Lord, for allowing us to walk into 2023 yards and our bodies still in shape and we're above ground. Father, we ask you to continue, Lord, to what we each and every member of this council, Lord, is even we may disagree, Lord, let us know one thing, we agree on that Marbury County working hard together, Lord, to make this place a better place to work, live, and do our daily business, Lord. Father God, these are the best at your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Judge Mia Weaver to come forward and this will be the installation of our council members. What we're going to do, we're going to do Ms. Purley first.
But here we come forward and Weaver, if you're standing there, can you tell your family or anyone you'd like to be behind you or hold up? That's your prayer.
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I am duly qualified
that I am duly qualified
according to the Constitution of this state
according to the Constitution of this state
to exercise the duties of the office
to exercise the duty of the office
to which I have been elected
to which I have been elected
and that I will
and that I will
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge the duties thereof
discharge the duties thereof
and preserve
and preserve
protect
protect
and defend
and defend
the Constitution of this state
the Constitution of this state
and of the United States
and of the United States
so help me God
so help me God
congratulations.
(applause)
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I am duly qualified
that I am duly qualified
according to the Constitution of this state
according to the Constitution of this state
to exercise the duties of the office
to exercise the duties of the office
to which I have been elected
to which I have been elected
and that I will
and that I will
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge the duties thereof
discharge the duties thereof
and preserve
and preserve
protect
protect
and defend
and defend
the Constitution of this state
the Constitution of this state
and of the United States
and of the United States
so help me God
so help me God.
(inaudible).
All right, moving to the approval of agenda items. Do we have a motion?
To move.
Second. All in favor of acceptance?
I don't stand.
Okay, so we've got seven, seven accepting and one abstaining.
On readiness, Mr. Chairman, we never call for an oppose, so rather than send out a stain, call for an oppose so I can properly vote.
Okay, so you want to oppose?
They call for an oppose.
I'd like to call for opposition. So it's six. One opposition and one abstain. Okay, moving to election of officers. Do we, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not Charles Paul Mills, to remain only chairman.
Okay, are there any other nominations?
I'd nominate Mr. Anthony Woods for chairman.
Okay, are there any other nominations?
Yeah, second.
Yeah, for second, okay, is there a second for Charles Midgley?
Second.
Is there a second for Anthony?
Second.
All right, at this time, we'll call for a vote. We're just doing it in order. All in favor for Charles Midgley, raise your right hand. Four, all opposed. That's two, three, and one, okay, four opposed. Okay, so it's a tie. Would you have to?
You have to vote for chairman for Anthony Woods as well. You have to call for a vote.
Right, absolutely, yeah. That is a zero on that one and for Chairman Woods, all in favor, Chairman Woods. That's four. And all opposed for Anthony Woods. That's four. So that's a draw for both the chairman and the vice chair.
You want to vote for vice chair?
I'm sorry, sorry, Johnson, excuse me. Okay, moving on to the vice chair, I'd like to open the nominations on the floor for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate Jason Steen for vice chair.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, are there any other nominations?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Ken Strowman for vice chair.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we will, okay, all, okay, all, we'll go ahead and go to call for a vote, we're just going in order. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, all in favor, Jason Steen for vice chair. Four, all opposed, Jason Steen. That's four. Okay, moving to Ken Strowman, all in favor for Chairman Strowman. Four, all opposed, Chairman Strowman. Four. We will have to table this to the February meeting and have another vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to make a note that in the past, when we installed officers, it's normally for a two-year period. I think that's been the past history of the county council, and I think this is yours and Mr. Steen's first year, so just wanted to make a note of that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to make a note that that is a house rule, Dr. Courtesy, through the council, where in this day and age, things change, so that's why we vote every year. We're voting every year to make changes if they need to be necessary.
All right, Susan, you got that? All right, moving to the approval of minutes. The December 13th, 2022 council workshop session, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I abstain.
Okay, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I abstain.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I abstain.
All right, so we've got one, two, and all opposed, minutes?
I abstain.
Okay. Susan, do you have the count?
Yes, sir.
All right, the December 13th, 2022 council meeting, the regular meeting, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion approved. Second.
On readiness, Mr. Chairman, in reviewing those minutes, it's not an accurate reflection of what happened in the meeting that I previously stated. You never called for an opposing vote in any of the votes, so the motion that had been carried have not been carried out fully. And the minutes that I've abstained from voting, I have not abstained from any voting. You never called for an opposing vote on any meeting at any time, so I reflect that the minutes are inaccurate and incorrect and they need to be changed before we can vote and properly install those minutes.
Have you made a note?
May I ask one question? If Dr. Johnson, I give very respectful, if you don't want me to put you down as abstained, it has to be either approved, abstained, or opposed.
But Chairman never calls for an opposing vote, so if he doesn't call for an opposing vote, I cannot vote. So the minute, the motion wasn't even carried out fully. So he calls for all in favor and then he goes through. He never calls for an opposing vote on any minutes and any meeting.
I can reflect that, I can reflect that, that he didn't call for vote, but I would still have to put in that you didn't vote.
Because it wasn't an opposing vote. And also, in reviewing those minutes, there was a lot of information in those minutes in regards to a dialogue that I had back and forth with some of my council members. It's really, you did an excellent job of capturing my words, but you did a poor job of capturing anybody else's words, so if you're going to be that meticulous in capturing my words, I respectfully request that you capture every other person's words that goes on in the minutes as well.
Yes, sir.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add that in reading the minutes, there's some statements or opinions that are given in the minutes toward Dr. Johnson, and the minutes should reflect facts and statements, not opinion.
Mr. Chairman, yes?
Yes.
Considering the contentious tone that we have, and hopefully that's all we're all working towards not having that, I'd recommend that we, you know, have a court reporter or somebody just do a transcript, and that way there's, you know, then you've got everything, all parts, everything, because I know from having done these before, that it is difficult to make sure you get everything, and I hate to put Kirk in the situation of missing.
With all due respect, Mr. Mullin, that's the council's responsibility, not the administrator's responsibility.
Am I still recognizing?
Yes.
That's just a recommendation I'm making, I'm not making the decision, I'm making a recommendation, so. I think that's an excellent recommendation, and we'll have a recording and a tape of it, can you arrange? Well, I think Dr. Johnson makes a point, y'all would need to decide whether you're going to do that or not. I'm just making that recommendation just to avoid any, any concerns in the future, so y'all can.
But in the past, we haven't had a problem with that, having our clerk of court accurately reflect the minutes. I don't think we should be able to hire any reporter, we have a clerk of court that's hired for that purpose.
Right. Well, we can, you know, she could, can work towards doing the same thing court and council can, but it is, you make a good point, you know, when you're doing those things, it's always difficult to make sure you get all sides and all comments. All right, thank you, we will visit that in the future, maybe put on the agenda to discuss. Moving to old business, recreation, community improvement initiatives, can you give us the update? Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we, you know, since council's last meeting, we had the holidays and had short weeks there, but we were able to keep going in the right direction with these major initiatives that councils moved forward. Now, I was going to give you some highlights of those, of the progress, and then also sort of the next steps there. So with regards to the Lake Boardwalk project, I met with the latest today with Sully Blair of the Lake Authority, they're very much on board. He is still waiting for his money from the state, we received our money from the state, but that's nothing but a technicality, that's coming, that's not a problem. We've been working to find someone who's done this before, at least sort of done this before, because the design of a boardwalk is not like the design of a metal building or some, something that happens frequently, and Mr. Wes Park has been involved in the staff side of working on that, and we've identified an engineer in the area that, that has done this and can share with us some of the documents used at Merle's Island when they did their boardwalk, so that gives us a sort of a jump start on that. Then the decision has to be made over whether or not you need to go out for a request for qualifications in order to choose that person, or if the design can be handled in a RFP from the different contractors that want to do it. So that's, we're working on that now, to get that together. Sully Blair is chair of the Lake Authority, is working with DNR to make sure there are no hurdles there, because you are dealing with water, you know, you're dealing with the lake, and that has different regulations. He advised us today that there does not appear to be any issue with building, you know, a boardwalk. If there's any need to reconfigure parking that maybe fills in a little wet spot or something, that could get into some details, so he's working on that side of it. So that's moving along, that project's moving along with the hope of trying to have that done before the spring, you know, like Memorial Day, because we want to move fast and get these things done. With the Broad Street project, we have, we are, we have entered into a legal contract to purchase the property, so that is tied down. Tonight, I believe the city council has a work session, and this is on their agenda from what I understand, so, you know, we had that good meeting with the city where they expressed an interest in partnering with the county on this project, and hopefully we'll get some guidance from them tonight, because that's important. That would double the budget and allow it to be even nicer, so we'll wait to hear on that. In the meantime, staff is working to do the due diligence on the site so we can go ahead and be prepared for the demolition or, or the repurpose of the property, that's being worked on now. We have, you know, we have inspection rights to go into the property while it's under contract. The current owner wants to be, have a representative here to do that, so that's a little limiting, but, but it'll still work out, so we can do that. We had some good news with some contact with the South Carolina Parks and Recreation Tourism Agency, they do have assistance for this type project, from programming to grants, all different things, so we're going to tie into what they do with their rest stops, and also with some, some activity at the beach, because we're in a flow and a path to the beach, and if you go down 5038, 501 to Merle Beach, you notice they have a chamber of commerce type rest stop before you, way before you get to the beach, so that's a thought there. Other thing that's come up in conversations is the ability to maybe have a shared commercial kitchen there. If you have a food truck, you have to have a licensed kitchen, from what I understand, to, to be able to have your food truck. So some communities have a kitchen that's shared by the different folks doing it, and that might be something to help foster business development, you know, I know the council is very interested in that, and mentions that at every time we talk about these projects. With regards to the Splash Pad project, it's from my perspective, the holdup there is to determine the location, and two things play into that, where, where the city ends up with their support or partnering with the county, and also an assessment of the swimming pool at the golf course, to see if it would go there if the swimming pool's not something that could be salvaged or repaired and used, so we're waiting on that. The folks that do the design of these type things say that that's not a very complicated thing, they do it mainly on a desktop and then go out and make it happen, so that's not as big of a concern, at least from my perspective. And then the final thing is the golf course, this is, you know, lots and lots of moving pieces there, and something that county hasn't done before, so we are currently advertising positions for an outside, someone in charge of the maintenance, the outside grounds type thing, and also somebody to be over the overall, manage the overall operation. We have some candidates for both and some qualified candidates, so we're beginning interviews as Doris left, but I think to the end of this week and certainly the first of next week.
Excuse me, Ms. Mullin, with all due respect, we are already advertising for positions for the golf course, and we haven't finalized, council hasn't finalized that, you know, that's a project that we are actually to be going to engage in, we've already.
Y'all voted in December to move forward with it.
We voted to move forward with the pursuit, not the actual acquiring of, so we're already posting and interviewing for positions, and we haven't even voted already fully, that that's something that we want to take on as a counter. We asked you to pursue, we didn't ask you to finalize, because we, in my understanding, we had until January the 31st of this year to finalize, so council, I don't recall seeing anything in council packet about us actually finalizing the price, acquiring the golf course, and doing all of that, and so we already advertising and.
Well, I think we need to separate the issue, because I'm doing what I, what I, council voted on, so if y'all, if your opinion is that that wasn't the vote of council, then I think y'all need to sort that out quickly.
Yes, we, so I respect the question that you hold off on advertising any positions or interviewing for positions until council has had a real opportunity to look at to see if that's something that council wants to do versus anyone else.
Mr. Chairman, I think that, being that we got to the end of the month, I think we might need to do a call meeting, so we can actually, like, Mr. Chairman, I'd like Mr. Mullin to say to make sure that we are all on the same page, because this is a big investment, and like I said, we want to make sure if we are on the same page to leap forward as one. If we are, if we've got reservations, we need to add a reservation out, or concern out before we go ahead and further, because we don't want, once you get that money out, we can't get it back. So I think we now, we still got some time, we go ahead and call it, have a call meeting, so we can just meet as a group and see where we at. Because I know one of the things that been talking to us, I know with the holiday time, we had a lot of limbo, we went to the Thomasville, we haven't able to, good facility, but we haven't spoken on that no more since that, and that totally off the, off the grid, I'm asking a question here.
I'm at a complete loss, council, I mean, I'm trying to act on what action I watched y'all do, y'all need to figure it out, we can't, we're to stop. We vote, we voted to pursue
Pursue.
the purchase of the, and close out, the purchase of the golf course and close out by Jan, we had an option till January 31st, and we got to close out by then.
To pursue, but that still has to come back to council, let's say he don't agree with the price. As council, we have a responsibility for the people's money, and for the people's, for the action that we do on behalf of the people. And so, you know, it was my understanding that we, we did give authority to go and pursue, but for us to hear now that there's been advertised positions and, and ready for interviews, that's beyond the scope of what we approved.
We, we did approve to go ahead and purchase the golf course.
No, we didn't, we, we gave.
I don't think there was any question on, on that. And we don't want to send, we don't want to send mixed signals to our staff that. Well, I'm fine, Mr. Chairman, but y'all need to figure it out, because all I'm doing is what y'all, what we took it as what you wanted to do. If you didn't approve the golf course, and everything else you voted for, you didn't approve other, because it was all presented in the same way, with a budget, with an actual budget, with all the details in it, and to, and to the language about moving forward to acquire the property, everything's in there, I mean. It was a unanimous vote, I mean, it's, it's in the minutes, I mean, it's.
It couldn't have been any more detailed, and the workshop that we worked on back there, all the figures that we went over, it couldn't have been any more detailed than what we were entering into.
To pursue.
And we took a vote on it.
To pursue, not to actually finalize, to pursue, to give you the authority to pursue, not to finalize on council's behalf. That still has to come back to us as the council to look at everything that had been in pursuit, so we can make a intelligent decision about whether that's something we want to actually iron out.
Now, you go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, my understanding was that whenever we voted for it, it was those four things is the direction we wanted to move in. We talked about kicking the can down the road, not kicking the can down the road. My understanding from, as a council member, is whenever we pursued and moved forward, that was either a language, if we're going to worry about the language, and that's, that's what the understanding is, my understanding was whenever we were moving forward with the pursuit and purchase, that's the reason we called the, the city meeting to, is so they could be together.
You agree?
If, if there was some not direction, I mean, that was, we should know, because our last thing was, let's hurry, I mean, is other council members wanted to say, how fast can we get it done? That, that was what we wanted, how fast could we get it done? That's what, I mean, we can, it may not be recorded, but I mean, that was, would be on the television, is how fast could we get it done? So my understanding was that we would move forward and, and make it happen.
I agree that we gave Mr. Mullin the authority to pursue, to pursue, and bring back to council what he pursued, and then we will make a final vote on if that's something that we want to spend the money on to acquire and to purchase.
I think our understanding was just totally different. That was, that was my suggestion, just going, we can have another meeting anytime you said it, Mr. Chairman, and so we can, so we can move forward, move on from here, but we just go around what I think and what you thought, and what we heard and what we read. I know Ms. Susan, she got all the minutes, and she can bring the meeting, the minutes to the meeting, and we just discuss it again. I mean, what is another hour to discuss it on a later date, you know, like Thursday, Monday next week, you know, we can do all that.
If we need to have a, it works out.
There was no conversation in that meeting that we were going to come back and ask Mr. Mullin what we were going to do. We picked out four things off of the list that he presented to us, the cost, the money how it's going to be available, and what was going to be spent on each thing, and we all in unison agreed that we would pursue those four things. There was no mention ever of coming back to Mr. Mullin, what would you come back for? He presented everything that we wanted to know, and we chose the four avenues that we wanted to pursue.
Mr. Odom, with all due respect, if you look back in the minutes, I've always voiced my objections and concerns about acquiring a golf course, so that was not a unanimous vote. I've always, since day one, voiced my apprehensions, my, my, my objections to acquiring a golf course and doing that as a, as a phase one project, always, and it's reflected, it has abstained in the minutes on the last minute, but was actually a no vote because there was no oppose in, in, in Mr. Chairman Midgley's response. But I've always objected to county spending this amount of money on a golf course that very little citizens of Marbury County would truly benefit from. I've always objected to that particular stance, and our, my language was to pursue.
Well, Dr. Johnson, we can go back and look at it, but I think we already set in action the purchase of the golf course.
No, we haven't.
And that was.
We pursued, pursued and purchased.
If you abstained and the vote was seven to one abstaining.
It wasn't abstained, Mr. Chairman.
The vote was opposed.
Yes.
The vote was higher, there were still seven votes, seven in favor of, if you say you abstained or didn't vote.
We voted in favor for giving Mr. Mullin the authority to pursue.
All right, Councilman Strowman has the floor.
To, to this council, it is our responsibility to give clear, give clear direction to the administrator when we give him instruction. The word pursue means exactly that he could go and bring the final contract back to council, and we approved the final contracts, but to go out and hire and like that, there's nothing wrong with, in my opinion, there's nothing wrong with him lining up candidates for the job in pursuit of staffing that facility. However, the final say goes to council for the purchase of anything that we do. There's a contract that has to be given to the attorney, and, and has to be approved to, through us. You know, we, I mean, we, what we have.
We'll just have to have a work session.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I stay out of the floor. There's a, there's a contract that has to be given. Right now, we have a roundabout window of a price.
It's 6:30 PM.
A roundabout window to a price, that's what we have. That's what we have. But the contract, the final numbers, that's what we're, that's what we're legally bound by. That's, that's just about mine. So, you know, my opinion, my opinion is, in my opinion, is that we work in pursuit of this. So, if you want a definition of the word pursuit, have a workshop.
Well, we can look at what we said, but let's, let's have a one hour.
Yes, sir. I think you need to print out everything and have it in front of it. And I would ask you to go as fast as you can because there's no, there's, you know, we just need to know what to do.
We will, we will give you, Mr. Administrator, and I'm not trying to take the position of the chairman, but believe me, we will give you absolute direction as to which way to go. So, will not be any confusion for you or our attorney.
For me also. Yeah, I mean, for all of us, I mean, I thought we were moving forward, so if there's some miscommunication, I want to make sure it's clear.
Okay. And so, let's schedule a meeting as soon as possible, staff can do it.
Is there any other item on here that you're now saying that we shouldn't be pursuing? Or I hate to say that word now. I don't want to waste much time on something if, if it's, the council's going to go.
It's not you wasting time. You're, you're, you're pursuing things, but still you have to come back to council to get approval for the thing that you pursue.
Right.
We could pursue a lot of good things and put a lot of good work in, but if it doesn't work for our county, then it doesn't work for our county.
Ms. Mullin, at the Sherona State Park, they do have a boardwalk. I made a comment while you were talking a few minutes ago. And that is a state on late with a, with a boardwalk in it. I don't know if there's hurdles at the cross, but I do know the state park and it is a park, so it has a boardwalk in there. So, it may be somebody could talk to it, Parks and Recreation, to help speed up that process.
Okay. Let's call for a meeting this week if we could.
You have, you know, you have to get a 24-hour notice. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Or if we could do it as a work session, but anyway, we'll go ahead and schedule something and we'll.
Well, I mean, y'all need, y'all direct out.
You need to, why everybody here? Set up a meeting.
Okay. What's at the meeting? Moving to new business?
You want to sit this week, you want to go and sit?
My mom said, now while everybody here.
You have, you have to give how much of a notice? Forty-eight hour notice?
Twenty-four hour.
Twenty-four hours. The 12th, how does the 12th sound, everybody? I don't mean to step, but I'm looking at this.
I have an economic development prospect at, at one o'clock till probably three o'clock. Other than that.
Could, could.
I mean, I don't have, I don't have to be here. I'd like to be here, but I have something at 12:30 to.
I mean, he has a basketball thing this, that afternoon. So, he has basketball. Could we do the 12th at noon? I'm just trying to, we're just looking at calendars.
When?
The Thursday.
I have an economic development prospect in town.
Oh.
One to, one to three that's kind of important. Other than that.
How about that morning?
That's fine.
Ten o'clock?
When?
On the 12th, on Thursday?
I'm 12 hours in. I can't work, can't make it at all.
How about the 13th, Friday?
I'm off.
At noon. What you got? You got anything?
Some time off.
Friday, the 13th? I can't, I can't get 11, it's too faster.
Me and Jason be here. I call Jason, make sure you're coming.
Yeah.
Friday, the 13th? Can you make that?
He's checking.
I'm due before 12:30.
He's due before 12:30. Eleven thirty.
Is that good with me?
Eleven thirty.
Ms. Lawson, eleven thirty.
Is that good with?
At this present time, yes, sir. We'll be fine.
Is that good with staff?
Yeah, I mean, we're just going to print a bunch of stuff out and we'll go ahead and send it to you ahead of time so everybody can read the same thing.
Okay. All right.
But any other questions about my report before we move on?
No.
Okay.
All right, moving forward. Resolution one dash twenty-three dash oh-one, a resolution regarding an agreement between the Marlboro County Sheriff and the United States Marshal Service for the housing of federal inmates in the Marlboro County Detention Center and the creation of a special fund and related policies for the receipt and expenditures of revenue collected as a result of said agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I know the sheriff's going to come up and he can add some, some flavor to it. You've got some sheets that you got and there's a correction this afternoon that, this one, that's the one you want to look at. Sheriff, you want? But basically what the resolution asks is with regards to the federal inmate revenue is to create a special fund to be able to put that revenue in so that it's isolated and it's there and accounted for. And then the sheriff, as, as you all work together to have a budget, then the expenditures and revenue in and out would be budgeted like any other money. And so, I know the sheriff has some particular request that y'all seen and I know he's going to speak to that.
Chairman, council members, a congratulations to Ms. Lawson and the chairman who went fast into the, good evening to everyone else. As most of all of you over the, this past year, we've been working with the federal prison institute to try to get a contractual agreement to house federal inmates here. And we are at that point now, we're, we just received information last week that the only thing that they're waiting on is a, an account number that we should have, hopefully in the morning so they'll have somewhere to disperse the funds out. We agreed in this contract to do with this, the agreement has to do with fifteen inmates that we have agreed to house at a per diem of sixty-four dollars, a per diem of sixty-four dollars, which equates to revenue generated twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars per month, which over a year's time would generate four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred thousand dollars, almost a half a million dollars. And what we would like to do is as soon as we possibly can begin housing these inmates, which I hope is within this month, probably by the end of the month, that money should start. Now, we won't get all fifteen inmates at one time. Over a period of the next two to three months, we'll get fifteen inmates. Within that period of time, we should be able to see the exact flow of inmates, which will always be fifteen. It will never be lower, it can't be more, but we'll be fifteen inmates. Come July, obviously, that's when the budget starts. Once the budget starts, we should then have a good feel of the money's generated because it won't change. It'll be that amount of money. So, we're hoping, and I hope I'm not going to fast forward, we're hoping that April through June, we can see what the flow would be like. It should be a constant flow. If it is a constant flow, we can't generate any more per diem, but we can generate more inmates. So, come July one, I would ask for five more inmates, which would give us a total of twenty inmates, which would increase, it would increase then to the four hundred and sixty-seven, two hundred thousand dollars. What we're asking for as we generate those funds is how we would like to see those funds spent. And those funds, I'd like to be, we'd like to say the funds would be spent obviously on staffing and on an increase in, in revenue, an increase in salaries for our staff. If we look at, if we took and we did ideas, looked at how much of the offices are being paid now, we are at twenty-eight thousand dollars if I'm not mistaken for correction officers. The average correction officer now in this state makes about thirty-two, some of them make at least forty. We're paying twenty-eight. When it comes to the officers from the sheriff's office, we're averaging about thirty-four four. The lowest paid deputy in the PD makes forty thousand. That's five thousand, six hundred dollars less than anywhere else in the, in the state, not in the state, in the, in the PD region. That's a low amount of money. Some people make a lot of money, but that's not a lot of money. That's not a lot of money by any means. But by generating these funds that we, we should be able to get from the federal, the federal government, the federal institution, we could up those salaries. And my intent would be to raise everyone's salary of three thousand dollars. By doing three thousand dollar salaries for detention center, that would come to eighty-four thousand, sixty-seven dollars. By adding three thousand to the sheriff's office, it would be a hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. We would like to add three more detention officers, which would come to a total of a hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. The total of all our requests of the three hundred and seventy-one thousand, seventy-four cents, that is actually, if I'm not mistaken, we would be about forty thousand over. Then what would it have been budgeted for? Roughly forty thousand over. What I did not share with you is that's just the actual cost for the per diem. Hopefully, we're going to have some fluff. And the reason I said we're going to have fluff, inmates are coming in in February. We have from February to July that will have revenue coming in that, that's not in. We aren't, that money hasn't been allocated anything except one thing, let me be clear about that. And that is two vehicles that the county bought for us a few months ago. And we agreed to reimburse the county for those funds. So, from July, from, let's say from March to July, we should have enough revenue to cover those two vehicles. That way, the county would have been reimbursed for the money that we agreed to. And all money is going forward from July one on that would be allocated for salaries for the, for staffing. Now, part of the agreement with the fed, federal government is this, all transportation is separate from the per diem money. We said sixty-four dollars. Well, transportation is different. The transportation is twenty-five dollars an hour plus the cost for travel. So, every time officers went out to make transportation runs, they would be paid twenty-five dollars per hour, per officer plus travel. Obviously, our officers don't make twenty-five dollars an hour. They make about seventeen and some change. So, there, there's an extra income coming in there every, every time there's travel and we'll probably be doing it five to six times a week.
Just while, just hit me. The van that you have to transport with, is it a certain van or is it suitable? Is, I mean, is there anything?
One of them is somewhat suitable. The other will have to have a cage put in it. I don't know why we bought vans and get put cages in.
I'll just.
But we will have a cage in that one. As we speak, we've had that conversation with, with Mr. Mullin. We've already ordered a cage for that particular van and hopefully we will be able to get some vehicles this year. I think that's on the trust board to have some vehicles this year to help in that process. The idea for the additional three options that we want correction officers is strictly for transportation. That'll be their job. They will be doing transports for us. Also, they'll be available during the day in the office as we need them. And I think that covered. I don't think that I missed anything. I don't think I missed anything with that. Also, in the process of doing that, there's some other things that I just quickly want to share and I can sit down and I'm done. One of the other things that we've done is, and I spoke with you at last week, about the overtime grant through the highway safety. And I will need approval with that if you don't mind for that tonight, that I can get approval to go forward to, to work on the grant for overtime. That overtime can be used obviously for certain things and we can pretty much cover it. One of the things that we're doing is, because it's off the highway safety, we're doing some safety checkpoints now. And when you do a safety checkpoint, it requires us to have additional people to come out and do that work. Well, we're paying for that. That's part of what we're paying for now in our overtime. We're not losing money, but we're expending all of our funds now in overtime to try to reduce some problems that we have. Most of our checkpoints are done in the McCall area because we got folk coming over from North Carolina and from South Carolina, they're flip-flopping over. Most of them are going to the clubs right in, in, in McCall. If we can set up the checkpoints like we're doing, we can slow down some of that traffic coming into McCall, some of the bad traffic. We, we, and I don't, and I apologize, I don't have the notice for that, but I'll send them out to you tomorrow or later than Thursday about the number of arrests that we've made during those checkpoints, the number of guns and drugs that we've got from those areas. And we get them every time we set up checkpoints. And I think that's an advantage to us and to our community that we're getting guns and drugs off the street. I think we see a huge difference in continuing to do that. So, that money would be used just for that purpose, to help and subsidize some of that cost for overtime. I do know of Joining County who's getting ninety-two thousand dollars a year in overtime. That's how much they're generating and that's how much they're paying. I can't say how much ours would be, it's based on the numbers that we have now and that will help us. The state then will make that determination of what they think it would be. And I'm quite sure whatever amount would be more than what we're getting, we're not getting anything. And it would be helpful. Another thing.
Excuse me, Sheriff, you said the grant is ninety-two thousand?
That particular grant, not for us.
Right.
They would determine how much our grant would be. I was saying, and Joining County is getting ninety-two thousand in overtime. And their account is not much bigger than ours.
Is it a match?
No, no match. It's straight up money. There's no match.
So, it won't, it won't put us liable for anything else?
No, sir. The only thing we're agreeing to, we agree that we will do certain things and that is checkpoints and things of that nature. And by doing that, if we generate overtime doing that, then they will pay for that overtime. They'll give us X amount of dollars. We just have to show that we're doing the work and that's easy. You give us the money, we, and we're already doing the checkpoints. We do the checkpoints twice a month. So, we're doing it now. Now, we'll be getting some money back out. That, that's the idea behind that. And it helps us on our overtime and it helps the county with overtime. It reduces the amount of money that you have to give us for overtime. I promise you, I'm doing everything I can think of to make sure that we're doing it all weekend to help subsidize some of the needs for this county that we don't have money to do. If there's money out there that can be used, and that's what we're trying to do. And hopefully that we're showing.
But the grant request will come through the county?
That's the second thing. It's on DQ.
Yeah.
It's on DQ.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask?
Yes.
Sheriff McNeil question. Sheriff McNeil, in reading what, and thank you for this detailed information. Concerning the inmates, they'll be, the federal inmates.
Yes, ma'am.
They'll be housed at the detention center.
Yes, ma'am.
And my concern is for me, at one time, I have the facility as far as lockings and all those things.
We, we, we have been inspected by the federal corrections as well as state and we meet all requirements.
So, we are up to par with safety for our employees.
We're in the process of doing some of that, but my point is, we're making those changes that we think we need to make. But as far as the regulations that the feds and the state require, we meet those requirements now. We just need to upgrade what we have.
So, we're in compliance?
We're in compliance. We're, we're in compliance, but it needs to be someone done. You know, you can have a 1939 Ford out there that meets compliance, but you might run a new car, but it meets our requirements.
Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Back to detention officers, what's the salary of detention officers?
I would say it's twenty-eight.
It's thirty-eight.
It's twenty.
Two fifty.
Yeah, twenty-eight, two fifty.
On the, on your request for the three detention officers, that figure, one hundred sixty-two thousand, nine twenty-three, and then on the federal inmate housing contract summary, there's six only for.
We, I apologize. We had to make that change. We realized how much over we had gone in the revenue that we had coming in. So, we went back and redid the figures. I apologize.
Because those figures on the three and on the six, that comes out to fifty-four thousand, three hundred and seven dollars per detention member.
There's an update. We have an update.
Oh.
Hundred sixty, hundred sixty-three thousand dollars divided by three for detention officers, that's not twenty-eight thousand, that comes out to fifty, fifty-four thousand, three hundred and seven. And it's the exact same figure is to sit on this request that he gave us, the six more detention officers at three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that comes out to another, exact same figure, fifty-four thousand, three hundred and seven dollars. I'm just using your, I'm using your figures or I guess the figures are presented to.
They're, they're paper.
Hours, hours to go.
Hours, hours to go there.
Hours to go. Uh, now, I'm not sure. It was, let me, let me see where you're looking at. I apologize.
I mean, I was just...
You're talking about, you're talking about the six employees.
I'm just looking at the, uh, your request, uh, for six more detention officers.
Yes, sir. It comes to three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
You say that should, three, uh, that comes out to fifty-four thousand three hundred and seven. And then on the small sheet, on the three additional for the detention center, ninety-six thou-, that comes out to fifty-four thousand three hundred and seven.
On, on the first, the first line is you're talking about where it says three more detention officers. We all got that paper? If you, if you divide three, divided by one sixty-two, you come up with fifty-four three hundred and seven.
Exact, that same figures?
Yes, yes. I, I didn't, you broke it down by individual. Okay, yes, sir.
But they, you said the s-?
Yeah.
You said salaries twenty, twenty-eight, you said it was twenty-eight thousand.
You have all the benefits that go with it. I don't know what those figures are. Those came from finance.
That's a lot of benefits.
I, I, I...
It is a lot of benefits, and that's something everybody needs to be aware of that, uh...
It's insurance.
I mean, is that the correct figure, the fifty, fifty-four?
Yeah, if I can speak to it real quickly. So, um, you know, he, he has a request for a raise, but on the ones, the additional ones, the raise is already built in there. So if the starting salary now is twenty-eight, two fifty, and you wanna take it to thirty-four, um...
Thirty-four, thirty-four.
Anyway, we started out with thirty-four. So, yeah, you, you make a good point. The fringe benefits on a job are...
Twice as mu- twice as much as salary.
Just about.
It, it's, it's tremendous. Between health insurance, state retirement is over twenty percent that this, that we have to pay in. And then FICA, you know, social security tax and all is seven, eight percent. So, yeah, it runs it up.
That's why we lowered it because we, it, it was, it's not impossible, but it was just too much. And that's why we lowered it.
But this, this sheet here is the latest version. So when you're looking in the, in the other sheets, you have to modify them with this.
Yeah, I apologize. We just, once we realized how much that cost would be after adding all the benefits, it was just, we had to reduce it because of that. And that's why it dropped from the six, from the three hundred and twenty-five eight forty-six down to one sixty-two nine twenty-three. That was the, the purpose of the reduction, to try to get it where it's manageable.
Okay.
To get it where it is manageable. I apologize.
But these figures now that we have, it's like a four, you're forty thousand more than, as we said, forty-something thousand more than what?
Yeah. It's actually forty. But if, if we added in the transportation and all of that, then it would work itself.
Well, just, I mean, just as far as numbers now, if, if, you're just, just as far as today, if you had, how many could you take tomorrow to say, I feel safe to generate XYZ dollar? How many would, would your, would your detention staff now?
We can hold, hold fifteen.
You can hold fifteen?
Yeah, we can take them.
Okay. And that was safely, I mean, you feel safely in a number?
We are staffed and budgeted for twenty-two officers. We now, by, from Ju-, come January fifteenth, we'll have twenty-one, if not twenty-two. So we have the staffing now.
Okay.
And that won't require any overtime for the staff?
I can never say there's no overtime. That's all I can ever say. I, I can't stand here telling anybody because if emergencies or something come up...
But I know that is a concern, overtime.
Yes, ma'am. It is, it's gonna always be a concern, but because in the profession that we're in, I'm standing here right now talking to you, and my phone doesn't go off. If someone gets shot right now, it requires overtime. I have no control over somebody getting shot. If, if we wanna do extra help out in the community, that requires overtime. Unless we get staffed up that we can run a shift without calling anybody in, that's the only time you're never gonna get overtime. That, that, this is a different job. It's not like running any other job that you do. It's not like anything else. It's different. I can't have four people working to have a shooting. It's gonna take five people just to work the shooting. I still got calls going. This world doesn't stop when somebody get a shot.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, you know, I mean, just, but for, for detention center, I mean, I think we're, I, I know, I know all that stuff. Yeah, just detention center, is that any overtime built into there or would there be overtime for the detention center?
Yeah, there is some overtime, as we do. I apologize if, if that's what you mean, I apologize.
That's exactly what I mean.
Okay, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
And I should've been clear with my...
Yeah, well, I apologize. But if there's overtime, there's always gonna be overtime generated within the budget itself anyway. So that won't change about, that amount of overtime won't change.
But if, if I may add on, on your behalf, um, you, we run a lot of overtime in the, in the detention center in the past because we had a lot of vacancies. And as, as he's proposed and y'all approved, increases in salaries, you've been able to recruit people to come in and, and get, take those jobs and keep those jobs so the overtime goes down, the more you can, can hire.
And we're in a position now where we are staffing pretty good there. So the overtime there is minimal. It, it's very minimal, and there we, we're, by adding these three, they're gonna be doing basically nothing but transportation. Where in the past, the sheriff's office had to do a lot of their transporting because they just didn't have the staffing to do it. But these next three people that we hired, they're being hired for nothing but transporting, which does not take away from the facility itself. So we'll be able to manage that pretty good.
Sheriff, uh, go ahead.
I, I know this may be just an obvious question, even with us having a state prison and a federal prison here, is this grant for Marlborough County Sheriff Department, so is this a grant that we're taking advantage of?
No, that's not a grant. No, ma'am, it's not a grant. It is a contractual agreement.
Contractual agreement.
The federal government does not have enough, enough housing for their inmates.
Okay.
And, and because they don't have enough housing, they're constantly calling other facilities to help out. So this is an uncommon, it's just never been done in Marlborough County. But it, it's common in most places.
Well, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
I think the, the request, this is, this information's for next year's budget?
Yeah, this is off of July.
Right now?
Not, not for now.
Okay.
This is next year's budget. Uh, and, um, I was where, with the grant, uh, with the overtime for grant, that grant would be for the sheriff's office itself to help, uh, encompass some of the overco-, some of the overtime that we have there. If I can get, uh, your approval to go forward with that grant, I'll need that.
So, so the clarif-, uh, clarification, the resolution is for the fifteen that you could staff with what you have now?
Yes, sir. I'll deal with that.
I mean, is that, that's what, that's what, I mean, from that's what my understanding is, is, uh, the resolution today would be for the fifteen that you can house now with the staff that you have? Is that the con-, that's the contract for...
That's, that's the contract, and what you're, what we're agreeing to is that the funding comes in, it goes to an account for us to use a- as, as needed. That, that's what we're asking. The funding comes in to a, a special account, and then we use it, and, uh, you'll be reimbursed for any money that we use from it. It's like the same thing you're doing now.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, just as, I know you, you were, uh, you, you and I talked, I told you I was a numbers person. I mean, we, you know, I told, we, we look at, like I said, I, I, I thank you for trying to look for ways to, uh, generate a, I think, so it's not a, a burden to the, the tax, to the taxpayers.
We just coming up.
And so I, 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 I know that, but I mean, I just wanted to say, you know, I just wanted to, you know, you just, you know, reassure us as to, you know, do we, you feel comfortable with the fifteen that you can have, uh, how's that now?
And as I was saying with the, um, overtime, that that's gonna be another way that we can generate funding to help some of the, some, trace some of the costs that we have now with overtime, uh, through that overtime grant. And that is a grant that you will need to approve.
There was a, is that a three-year before you have to, before, did I read it, three years before you can kinda come back up with another number?
Yes, sir.
It was three years?
That, that three years has to do with, we cannot change that part of the contract, uh, within three years. At the end of three years, then we can go back and we can renegotiate the per diem cost, which means at that point, we can either say we need, we'll never say we need less, but I always say we need more. And, and there is a cap off right now that we probably can work toward in three years.
Sheriff, I know, um, this is for, um, the fiscal year starting July, and I know with the, um, the officers on either at the detention center and the sheriff department, what they hear, uh, if we were, um, okay to three thousand dollars, they're gonna be no, no win.
They know.
They know when, well, we don't know when.
Uh, if this, if this is approved, I'm hoping it'll be July one.
It is, he, he's proposed, this is just like a heads up on what's coming in the budget.
Okay.
This, I, I'm preparing...
So money will be already allocated, money will be already in the bank by July one?
The money being hit, going into...
Okay.
That's the whole idea. That's why I'm asking that we look at it beginning July one. Between now and July one, we should know where we're going with it. Then, then if you okay it, cause you don't, you don't have to okay it until July one because, so when, that's when the budget is. This is a part of your budget.
Could, yeah, that's why I was asking, staff you have now, what was the number? That would give us a feel about where you'd be money-wise by, by March, April?
I don't wanna wait till the budget comes out to tell you that because you would've already done the budget, and that puts us a year back. So this is just a heads up on where we're headed.
Okay. Um, the overtime grant, we, we gonna need to vote?
Yes, sir.
This evening on that?
Generalists to go forward with it.
Both of you. Does everybody understand that good enough? Any, any questions to the sheriff on that?
I can't say that I truly understand everything on this because I, I don't, I like the concept, but I do. So, um, if we don't approve this now, will this hold up the account or something? What would it do?
Uh, it, yes, ma'am, it holds up everything, uh, pretty much. And, and that's what it, the only thing that we're waiting on with this federal inmate is actually a, uh, bank routing number.
I heard you say that.
To, to give them so we can go ahead and start with the inmates. That's the only thing that's, we're waiting on, an account number to give the feds so they can start putting the money into the account. That's what we're waiting on.
And that would mean you're going to the bank and making a, instead of an account?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And it's, that account is strictly for nothing but federal inmate funds.
Okay.
Um, the, the staff understand the overtime enough to...
Yes.
To make the recommendation?
Yeah, we've worked with the sheriff on both of these, and the first measure, I think, is very reasonable. It's, all it's saying is, you know, he's gonna move forward with the contract, which he statutorily has some authority to do without counsel. The money will come into an account so it doesn't get lost in it, not lost, but you know, it doesn't get mixed with any other money. It's there. And then at budget time, you know what his intent is. You already got a, a peep into the future, and you can approve that. The overtime grant seems to be purely, they give us money if we can demonstrate we used it for that, overtime for that purpose. So my, my, my perspective on it, um, is that these are things, these are, I recommend that you adopt these two resolutions so you can move forward.
Okay, the, uh, warning on the overtime grant, and I like to put it out there as a motion if, if, you know...
Well, I think you've got, you've got them separately, and the first one is one twenty-three one for the, for the, uh, inmate thing.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no more discussion, I'd like to make a motion for resolution oh-one-two-three-oh-one regarding an agreement between the sheriff and US Marshals, and we provide the, uh, a avenue to put the money.
Is there a motion? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, it's unanimous. Okay, um, now, we've already discussed it, but I have not done the reading on, uh, resolution It's a resolution authorizing submission of, of applications by Marlborough County for highway safety grants administered by the South Carolina Department of Public Safety and available to offset traffic safety operational cost of the Marlborough County Sheriff's Department, and authorization to accept grant if awarded. Any further explanation on that, or can we go ahead and, uh, can we have a motion on that?
Still moved.
Second. Okay, in the second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, unanimous.
Okay, um, thank you, and I appreciate that. We will get right into it. Next, we have, uh, it's called the Pro- Project Lifesaver, uh, and it's a, um, partnership with the Power Club. And, and the idea is, you may be, for me, in the past, the Power Club had these little things that they sold or gave out if you fell or something, but had the alert, where they no longer are involved in that, but they, now they do, uh, what's called Project Lifesaver. And what it is, is a, I found out that it's a bracelet that you can wear on your arm or a pendant around your neck, and it's for people that wander off, like Alzheimer's, people with Alzheimer's or, or with, um, dementia. Uh, in our case recently, obviously, it had to do with someone with autism that walked off. And the way it works is, uh, we have transmitters that, a transmitter along with the equipment that we will have at the office, that if someone walks off, we will be able to alert and find out exactly where these people are, the much time and fashion. Uh, if most of you remember, we have a gentleman up in the sand here that was, went missing. It was over a hundred degrees that day, and it took us eight hours to be able to find him. He was only about a hundred, two hundred yards away from the house, and he was in such a wooded area we could not find and get to him. That this alert, uh, and this transmitter will help us, um, find these individuals hopefully much quicker. It is costly, but it, it's no cost to us. The Power Club has agreed to absorb all funds and all costs of that entire program, training and everything. The good thing is, once we're trained, we can get trained to be trainers, or we can train everybody in our office and anyone in the county that wants to fall from that umbrella, we would be able then to train them in the use of this equipment. Uh, obviously, I, I want to take this to all of the, um, assisted living homes, into the school district, and anywhere we can where we have people who have disabilities that may be unfortunately, that may walk off from their homes or something. And I think this is a good tool for, for, for us and for the county as a whole. Again, there's no cost to us. The Power Club has agreed to pay for everything, and, and I think it's a good win going forward with that. Again, I don't believe in even approval because it's no cost to us, but I just wanted to make you know that, that we are still trying on, we can do work again. And lastly, uh, there, there's always apprehension about what we do and how we do our jobs. Are we doing it right? Are we effective in what we do and how we do it? I, I think one way that we can help remedy some of that is if we train or teach people and show people exactly what we do, we as, as law enforcement. And I found out in the past, the best way to do that sometimes is to show and tell. And, and so we would like to start a sheriff's citizens academy, except eight with academy, two hours a week, where the public, anybody who wanted to join, be a part of this academy, could come in, and we would actually go through, train, and teach you our policies and procedure. Uh, I invite all of you to, to be a part of that. That way, you'll know firsthand exactly how we do it. We, we, you will have a copy of our mandate. You would see exactly, because it's not a secret, uh, and you would see just how we do our jobs. You'll have an opportunity to ride with the officers and see how they train and, and how they answer responding to calls. And we'd like to, 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 and it's open not to you, it's open to the entire community. Anybody who wanna, who wanna come to this academy, I think it's an opportunity for you to see what we do. That way, for me, it's helpful, and it really is so helpful. If you see an officer doing something, and somebody's standing over here saying, well, you know, he's not doing it right, you can say, yes, he is. He's doing exactly what the state says he's supposed to do. Or, you can tell that officer, he's not, she's not doing what it's supposed to do based on what you.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair, with this role, what would actually be the role of the citizens, just be trained citizens?
This is going to a class?
Okay, will you set up some type of advisory board, or some type?
No, ma'am.
They won't be a part of that?
No, ma'am, no advisory board. This is just to teach or train. I guess that's a poor choice of word when I say train. Maybe I should say enlighten or instruct or show you how we do what we do. You'll just know how to do what we do, and I think that's important. I really do.
But no real role, no real role, not the advisory board or policymaking board?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the sheriff, if possible, really personally, I don't know about the rest of the board, could you get me a copy of your assessment force policy?
Yes, sir.
And is that a standalone policy, or is that, you know, something that?
It's a part of it.
It's part of your department?
They have mandated us, it's called 3050, H-3050, and that's one of the mandates that we have to have, there are nine different policies that the state requires every law enforcement agency in the state now to have by January 1st of this year.
Okay.
And it's called 3050, and that's one of those policies.
Right. If I could get a copy of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
What?
Oh, well, officer, we're not really out to that, because pretty much, big time subject in the town of McCall in that area, I know you said you had a little issue with having to work the road checks and stuff. Drug situation in town of McCall.
Yes, sir.
There's no secret about it.
No, sir.
I've heard a couple days ago, from a 40-year EMS person, said he'd never seen anything like that in his life, as he's seen in the last two weeks. And what are we doing when, I know they're pretty limited in what they have over there for police officers?
We are doing some things in McCall. And I'm going to say this, and I don't mean it in a bad way, if we find someone who has OD'd on drugs, if we can find out who we, or who alleges to have been the seller of that drug, we will prosecute them, and we have all intentions of prosecuting that person and charging them with involuntary manslaughter. We have an agreement, the solicitors' office has signed on to do that, and we intend to fully do all we can. Obviously, I can't stand here and tell you we got what we're doing, but I can tell you something is being done in the town of McCall. We're gonna, not only we're gonna assist, but we're doing all we can as well. The biggest thing that I can tell anybody to do, if I know fire is hot, I'm probably not going to touch it. If we notice this stuff is killing us, why do we use it? I mean, there needs to be some preventive measures taken by this county. We can lock them up, but history has taught me, I can lock up one today, but another's going to need to do it tomorrow. That's the truth. I can lock up 50 right now, it's 50 more waiting to take that guy's place, because he wants the money, because it's lucrative. But we have, we have to, as a community, come together, to work together, to figure out how to stop our problem. It's not a council problem, it's not a McCall problem, it's not a sheriff's office problem, it's a community problem. And it has more to do with it just with drugs. It has to do with the economic situation here, it has to do with the poverty and the living groups like them, all of that plays a part in these drugs. And to solve that problem, we all need to sit down, and we need to talk about what's best for our community. We need to talk about, I want to see my grandkids grow up not in jail or on drugs, but productive in this community. Not that they have to leave, but they can stay here, and we have something for them to do here. And the only way we do that, and I'm gonna say it, all y'all get mad with me later, okay? We gotta stop fussing and fighting with money each other. We gotta sit down and figure out what's best for us. I love this place, because it's the only place I know, as far as living. I've lived other places, but this is home for me. I ain't going nowhere. I convinced my son-in-law, and somebody would say, and my other son-in-law, for them to stay here, and to raise my grandchildren here. And I want them here, I want to see them, I want to spend time with them, I want them to go to school here, until all of us quit fighting like it's yours, because it ain't, it all belongs to God, but anybody knows how to die. Until we decide to sit down, and we come together as a community, and work out our differences, and figure out that we are human beings, we're gonna be stuck right here selling dope and going to jail. Thank you.
Any tip, any tip, as far as people in McCall, I can tell you, we appreciate it. We have a serious, serious problem.
We ain't going nowhere, we gonna be here.
Thank you, Sheriff.
No cost to nobody, we'll be here.
Thank you so much, Sheriff. I'll move into appointments to boards and commissions, and consideration of requests from Marlboro County Economic Development Partnership Board. All right. I know they have requests to add those members.
They have requests to add to reappointing of several, and they have a vacancy.
Is there a motion to approve Economic Development Partnership Board's recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, before the motion is on the floor, I noticed that when I'm looking at the economic development partnership people, Mohawk has made one of the requests.
Right, that's correct. I think that might be.
He's still, he's still around, that'll become a vacancy as well soon.
So that will become a vacancy?
It will eventually, yes, ma'am.
These are the recommendations, right here, on economic partnerships and everything. Do we need to read the names out, or accept as is? Have y'all seen that page? It's like the, it's almost the very last page.
Mr. Chairman, I've seen the request of the Economic Development Board, but by having been on that board, it's a little different now, the way we do the offices and everything else. I kind of like to revisit the conversation on the appointments and everything with that. So if we could table that, I would move to table that discussion until next week.
Okay. Is there a timeframe, that, do we need to put this on Thursday's meeting, or anything else?
I don't have the ordinance, it's an ordinance, I don't have it in front of me of whether, you know, they serve until they're placed or not, but it's an ordinance.
Can you get us more information on the ordinance, and maybe put it on February meeting?
Yep, I mean, whatever y'all vote to do, you need to vote on this motion.
And that is just one discussion, have y'all looked at the list? We need to vote on whether we need to, we're going to accept these members or not?
I need a motion to table it.
Accept the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, all in favor?
To table it?
To table it.
Till when?
Till next meeting or whatever.
Till next meeting?
February.
I'll table it next meeting.
Okay. I saw everybody's raising their hand, any opposed? Okay, are there any other appointments or reappointments to existing boards?
Mr. Chairman, I have a request. I made contact with persons in my district for several boards, and I have a confirmation thus far for the planning permission.
Okay.
I would like to appoint Ms. Judy Fuller. I have consideration on three other boards, and I'm just waiting on confirmation for next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bring it up with your next.
Mr. Chairman, I would second her nomination.
Okay.
Can we add, can we add to that, but I have one to put on more of a reappoint. Can we do it all at once, then it's one motion, it'll be filed?
We've done, you've done that in the past, as long as nobody opposes.
Do we need a motion for that, because it's her appointment?
Well, typically, you take the person's not, she's like nominating, or she's making the motion, and he's second.
Her nomination, okay.
And I'd like to put Ms. Patsy Juers back on the library board. That's my thing.
Okay, are those only two?
Do we need a second for that?
Do we have a second?
Still moved.
Okay, for both nominations, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, unanimous. Any acceptance of bids, Mr. Administrator?
No, sir, not at this time.
All right, moving to the reports, finance report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members, Mr. Monahan. Before you report for the period ending December 31, 2022, at six months into this current fiscal year, our revenues as of that date totaled $4,019,610, in comparison to $3,603,686 for the six months for the period ending December 31, 2021. General fund expenditures through December 31, 2022 totaled $6,739,664 of a $13,904,125 budget, or 48.47% of budget year-to-date. General fund expenditures totaled $5,769,009 for the same period ended 2021. In conclusion, revenues are up in comparison to the prior year, however, expenditures are up at a greater rate. So that's all I have to report this evening. I don't notice any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Park?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much for the report, but I have a, and maybe we can do it in a workshop meeting, because I truly want to understand the budget.
Sure.
I just noticed that some items I want to look at on page 111. Credit card.
Yeah. Those are credit card payments that we're receiving.
Okay, credit card payments.
Payments that we're receiving, yes. And those are separately classified, it's a small amount that we do receive, of course, we do pay a service fee when we collect using a credit card, and so we're kind of tracking those separately.
Okay, and receipts and all those are kept too, with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then further down on page two, page two? Not page two, page three. Expenses, it's at $2.14 like that, how is that just, they're putting out like?
Let's see.
Last page, two of two?
Okay.
Last hour.
All right. That was a, that was probably a reimbursement that reduced that expense line item.
Of $2.12?
Yeah, that was a, yes.
And the federal payment funds that we've gotten, we all have, we've spent?
That is going to be, there's going to be some discussion about that on the audit report, of course, after three years of no expenditures, it was actually, the auditors included that in the fund balance, and you'll hear about that reported at the next month's meeting.
Okay, and I like, I do appreciate everything that the departments are doing, and especially with finance, but for me, being new, I'm going to really like detailed reports, and I'm really going to expect that, and hope that I can get a clear understanding of that.
And I'd be glad to do some type of work session.
I would appreciate it.
That would be helpful.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Park, any other questions? I'm moving to the administrator's report, Mr. Monahan.
Mr. Chairman, the administrator's report this month, we always start with anniversaries, and we only have one, Warren McCall, Warren Shawn McCall, some people call him Warren, some Shawn, but it has five years. He actually retired and came back, so it's more than that. Sometimes our payroll will say five years. As far as things that have happened in the short time since our last meeting over the holidays, we did have a successful employee event for the Christmas spirit. We had caroling, I don't know, I don't know if any of y'all made it out, but I made it to one of them, where they stood in front of the courthouse and sang Christmas carols, and it was well-received, and everyone passing by and all, it kind of added to the Christmas cheer. They had an internal ugly sweater contest, which was, everyone liked, and they also had like decorating contests and that kind of thing. So this was a good thing, that our employee committee and Ms. Sumter were involved in, and went really well, and we're going to do it again next year to try to build employee spirit and that kind of thing. It is, it is time again, we didn't do it last year, it is time again to consider doing a county-wide cleanup day. And, you know, we, when we done it in the past, to try to do it before it gets too warm, because the snakes start crawling, and people are in, down in ditches and all, it's not a safe thing. So what I'd like to suggest is that we, that staff comes up with us some dates, and I know Ms. Lawson is a big advocate of this, and try to look and make sure those suggested dates don't have some other community event going on, and then email those to you if y'all are agreeable to that, and we'll come up with a date. And when we were doing it on a big scale, really before COVID, we would have a Friday, a Saturday event, starting early and ending at lunch, but we also would allow people some flexibility to do an area on Friday, or maybe the week prior, if a community group wanted to do that. So that seemed to work well, so that's a good building point there, but please look for that email, and please respond, so we can try to pick a date here before too long, really, because it will get warm quickly. So that's something good. Mr. Park made note of the audit, we have our audit from last year, which was, we, he came in and worked on New Year's Day, because the auditing firm was pushing to get it done, and got that done. They'll come next time and present that like they do every year, and there are no issues with the audit, and of course, they will present it, and you can ask questions about different components of it. And we'll get that to you ahead of time, so you have time to look at it before the meeting. With regards to economic development, we've been approached by the South Carolina Department of Employment and Workforce, they had a big community meeting after the Mohawk closure, if some of y'all went, if you remember this, and they had a room full of people. So they'd like to have a follow-up meeting with several purposes. One purpose is to talk about how things were handled, and how they responded, and the community responded with the initial closure. Then the next part is, how do we all work together to come up with programs, to train our folks to be able to be employable, to be more employable? And then I've asked them to add in another component, which I've discussed with some of you all, and with some citizens even, of rebuilding our local economy so that we have trades again, you know, where people can go and have a trade, and we're not as dependent on jobs with companies that are, you know, may don't have an interest, or don't have the attachment to the area as we do. So that's being planned for next Thursday. They wanted to particularly invite the folks that came to the last meeting, and I've suggested that they also include council, and certainly the council members that came to the meeting. We have the school board, the chairman of the school board was here. So all that is gelling, I imagine tomorrow, and emails will go out for that, so I hope you can participate that, participate in that. It gives us a good opportunity and an audience with the school district, Tech School, which is, you know, is an interest of councils, and trying to improve that situation, and all of that in the same room. I have a meeting this week with MPD, Marlboro Electric, Marlboro PD Electric Co-op, with regards to our spec building and marketing it, and we've talked and come to agreement, they're willing to assist us with marketing that, which is a big help for us, because they have a pretty wide network of people that are looking for that sort of thing. The spec building has served electricity by MPD, so they have an interest in it as well, and if you remember, they made a contribution towards constructing it as well, so they're a partner on that. The last thing I had listed was that Dillon County has reached out about a multi-part, multi-county park agreement. Those of you who've been on council for some time know that this is a legal agreement, it doesn't necessarily mean that we would go in with property shared by both counties, it means that they would create a legal agreement that allows them to present better incentives in Dillon County for a particular project, and in return, we would get like a 1% of the revenue. And then what happens is, when we have a project, they'll return the favor. It's just a legal mumbo jumbo that we've done a number of times, and they're asking to, they're asking for that to happen again. So once we have that paperwork, we'll share that with you all, but that's a common practice that helps them this case and helps us next time. We have several with Darlington County, we've had them with Greenville, South Carolina County, and different places. So that's my report for tonight, I will, y'all, as far as setting the meeting, did we come to a conclusion on that?
Yeah, it was, it's going to be 11:30. Friday the?
Friday 13th at 11:30?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I can make sure we do the legal notes and all that.
Mr. Strumman had a question for you.
Mr. Strumman.
Yeah, on the cleanup day, is this going to include brown, you know, like couches and mattresses and tires and?
I think we.
The hard, the hard garbage, you know?
It's my opinion that includes everything, because, you know, that's the only way we're going to get it out.
Because normally, what happens, the ones that I participated in, we give out little trash bags, and we go into the ditches and clean up the paperwork, but there's a lot of mattresses there, there's a lot of tires there, that, you know, normal people can't get. So if we can get a day schedule for maybe, that truck can go back and pick up those or something like that. Maybe we can do this in conjunction with the city as well.
I think that's a good idea. I think the ones we had early on that were very successful, we had folks bringing stuff in that were able to bring it in.
Right.
And then we had folks leaving it organized on the side of the road, like at least get it out of the ditch, at least so we know.
Right.
The thing that we did one time, that council may want to consider, is we did what's called, what we called a tire amnesty day, and amnesty meaning, you can't take so many tires to our landfills without getting charged, and you all were agreeable with saying, just bring all that you have. Now, we didn't let that apply to commercial folks running the tire business.
Right.
And the city did the same thing. So we had this period of time where we got some of these tires out of the ditches, which are off the side of the roads, and with image issues, you know, that's a big deal. So we can look into the cost of that and bring that back to you all if you want to.
It's a big deal in my, in my community anyway. And secondly, in your meeting with the co-op, Marlboro County, I think that's, Marlboro County Co-op, that's your meeting?
Yes, sir.
You know, we're going through the, this projects, you know, phase one, two, and three, and a recreation project, I just want to know, is there any way that they can assist us in funding, help funding that? And maybe this is a good opportunity for you to? And maybe this is a good opportunity for you to, to put out a feeler?
I will.
See what kinda response we get back.
I'm, I'm meeting just with the economic development person, but, uh, I will bring that up. And then when you have your meeting Friday, work session, then you might more formally, you know, make a request, meet with them. Cause you get to the point where you have some financial numbers you can work with.
Right, okay.
I think it's a good idea.
And Mr. Mullen, I would, I thank you, but I would like to, you also put on your, your budget that you will wanna upgrade our website.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
We have that in the budget to do an RAP, and we just haven't done it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for the minister?
My God.
Alright, thank you. All right, recognition of citizens, I've got Ms. Ridges.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, well, I, I have two things that I'm gonna speak for. The first thing is that I noticed it was like a lot of confusion with voting or something tonight. Like maybe you guys might be going Robert's rule of order or something again, because it didn't seem like it was fluid. It didn't flow like it was supposed to flow, and I'm sure you guys have been doing this a long time, but it seemed like it was the rest of the night. Okay, and the other thing is that when he said, I recommend that you take this, because you were consistently, um, questioning the sheriff, once he recommended it, then you all said, okay, let's vote on it. But I thought that the chairman is supposed to take the initiative to go ahead and say, can we vote? And let's make a motion instead of, under the recommendation of him. Because you all are a democracy, he's not a dictator. So you have to get that together. That didn't flow right, and it is on video. So you need to get an understanding for when the people see that, because there was a tie for a chairman tonight, right? So if you can't lead, then you can't be a chairman, okay? Next thing. My next thing that I wanna say is that, um, we don't want a golf course. Now, I looked at phase one, phase two, phase three renderings of what was going on phase three. Um, it had a splash pad, it had about six tennis courts and different things like that. Now, a golf course does not appease the community. The first thing that you're doing in phase one is gonna be more for tourists and, you know, food trucks. I advise you all to talk to food truck workers, because they're not posted in one place every day. They go where the money is at, that's why they're mobile, so they wouldn't be there every single day. So that would give you, like, you may have one truck there, one truck not, that's for tourists. Okay, fine, we had seven million dollars. Where is the money at for us? So it looks like phase one's gonna cost about a mill plus, because the building is X amount, hundreds of thousands. Then you have to demolish it, then you have to build it up and all those things. So that's a million plus gone. Phase two is the boardwalk. How many people are gonna utilize the boardwalk? Maybe ten, twenty, thirty percent of Marlboro County. I wanna know what of the recreational funds is for the community. Now, splash pad, that's wonderful. That's for children from one to maybe ten. But what about from ten on up? What is, where's the recreation for us? Like Mr. Wood said, that you all have went to Thomasville to look at some type of a water thing going on. If it doesn't make money, it doesn't make sense. So if you're gonna spend a million plus and it's not making money, per se, coming back every month, um, for phase one, then we need to have something to make money come back into Marlboro County. So on phase three, I saw it said, phase three point one. So I'm not sure if that's like a two-part thing, or? I, and what I also wanna make sure is, how are we gonna have the money? Are y'all making sure that this money out of the seven million that we have for recreation is allotted for phase three? We don't want bait and switch. We don't want you to show us some rendering of something that may happen, but then, when it, when it's time to get it done, we don't have the funds. Now, a lot of people don't, we don't golf. That, we had, we need to have some golf courses in Marlboro County that have closed down. We're not the beach. We gotta have more than that to keep some, something for us. What about, uh, we asked for a pool. We want water recreation. Older people need aquatic exercise, young people need swimming lessons. Um, cause maybe the school could, uh, tie into it and give some money towards having an in-ground pool, because then they could have swimming lessons for the students at school. So there's ways, but think of us. Don't just think of golfing, because we're, we can't utilize that. So we've had a golf course, and I can't say it was booming. It, it was sustainable, but we need something for the newer generation. I don't see Marlboro County becoming the next golf oasis anytime soon. But we do have people here that need things, our youth need things. We're not going anywhere. So don't just think of tourists, but think about people at the end. That's all.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Ridges. Alright, moving to, uh, recognition of council members. Start with, Mur.
I don't have much to say other than, uh, the situation I talked about, the drug situation in town. College is very, very serious, and a lot of people are very, very concerned about it. And, uh, you know, precinct, everything that the sheriff's already done, and what he's doing. And, uh, we just need to get a handle on that thing, cause it's just affecting so many people. And, uh, you know, when the E M S guy says, looking forty years, I've never seen anything like I've seen in the last two weeks. That's pretty serious. Anyway, uh, appreciate all the county employees, definitely appreciate the sheriff's department. They're constantly looking out for everybody, and, uh, you know, they're just, uh, I always be concerned, if you see we're coming with blue lights on, you know, you need to respect them. Move outside the road, because they're, they're rushing to some kind of emergency, and, uh, they need to give them a ride away.
I just wanna, uh, thank everybody for helping each other, and hopefully this year, we can get things on track, and get working together, and get some things done, and, and that's what I want, that's why I'm on council. I don't, you know, I hope that we can, uh, move forward with whatever we decide. Just go ahead and move forward with it for the benefit of, uh, everybody in the council, not just one, but everybody. And, uh, you know, I thank the sheriff's department, I think they're trying to do a wonderful job, I thank them for that. Um, I thank the staff, and I thank council members also for what, what they do. And, um, you know, I'm just glad to get started again with, with everybody, and, you know, hope to work with all of us, to work together and get something done this year. That's all.
Like I say, happy new year to everybody, glad we made it into a brand-new year. Um, I have one issue with the initiative, initiative that we have calling it a recreation initiative. There's a little, little, little to do with recreation that we have going on. Um, with this seven million dollars that we've been, been gifted. Um, I'm kinda surprised that no other city, you know, has come to council and requested that they be involved in money for recreation in their own individual cities. This money came to Marlboro County, not to Bennysfield, it came to Marlboro County. And I'm surprised that no other entity from, uh, different cities across Marlboro Counties have, have expressed interest in acquiring some money and some funding for recreation projects in, uh, that area. It's also baffled me that we have one recreation facility owned by the county, and that's the Prince Recreation Center in, in Blenham. And not one dime, not one dime of this money has been allocated towards the Prince Recreation Center. Our kids have started, um, basketball today, and the floor is a ice skating rink. An ice skating rink, and, and I saw an eleven-year-old almost turn his knee, almost to pieces, playing on a floor that, that nobody should be playing on, but yet we started recreation basketball on a floor that nobody should be playing on. Um, I've talked with our recreation director, he's done some proactive stuff, uh, um, to, to try to mitigate the liability. But for us to have one recreation facility in Marlboro County and not one dime, not one thin dime, has gone to the only facility that we call a recreation facility is a travesty. Uh, it is, is, you can't write a book, or you can't script a play about some of the decisions that we make. And, and, and we expect people to continue to stay around here, we expect kids to continue to, to grow and, and foster healthy social skills and, and healthy growth and development when we have opportunities. We went to Thomasville, and, and we had a great time up there, but there has not been one discussion about that facility, and how we can construct something in Marlboro County that mimics something like that with a water, uh, uh, you know, feature that, that encompasses, you know, the thing that we need in this county, not one. And we spent a, a long time driving up there, but not one conversation have we had, when, when coming back to Marlboro County, about how we can construct a facility, a facility. Every other county around us has a recreation facility, except Marlboro County. And we've been gifted money, and not one idea has been shifted towards looking out for this next generation. Who's gonna be the generation that's gonna carry us on out? We have one facility here, not one dime. I respectfully request that we take a look, and, and, and pump our brakes on these initiatives, and really take a hard look at what we're doing with this money that has been gifted. Because if I'm a citizen, and, and in two years, you're gonna come and ask me for a penny sales tax, and I know that you've been gifted seven million dollars, and not one thin dime has really gone to the building of recreation, I'm not gonna vote for a penny sales tax when you have money, and you didn't do anything to look out for the average citizen. Please let us be mindful of the decision that we're making, that we're looking out for this next generation, that we can help build them into the people that Sheriff Manille won't have to arrest for either selling drugs, or having to succumb to drugs, and what we're seeing in our community every single day.
Uh, I'm gonna say, uh, Ms. Pearl, welcome. Uh, like I said, I don't know, I think this is your twenty-fifth meeting without missing a date. Uh, I think she's been here almost religiously for two years, and, uh, and she's been, and this is her first time to set up here. And so, uh, like I said, welcome, glad to see you. Uh, like I said, that's, uh, to, you know, you look out there and see, uh, Ms. Plato sitting in the, that way, and you said, now, for all my terms up here, she's set up here, so like I said, but wanna say welcome. Uh, like I said, I look forward to, you know, I know you, you were, you were dotted I and crossly T with everything. So like I said, we, we, we're thankful for it, like I said, and, uh, so to the sheriff, uh, like I said, uh, just thank you. I know you got a, a tough, uh, road, uh, as, you know, I listened to the Pedro with what goes on, Mr., uh, in McCall, and, and Mr. Odom's, uh, and he, and it's, it's tough, you know, and it's just steady going back and forth, back and forth, you know? And so, uh, just from, as you said, you know, somebody's got to take, we, it's got to start at home. Everything's got to start at home. I mean, we've, we've, we've left everything away from home, let everybody else handle it, you know? So we got to take, if we get it back at home, where everything else will be okay. And so, uh, like I said, I just, hopefully, the new year, uh, I bring things, you know, as, everything's getting even and even and even. So we just have to, you know, look after each other and continue to, uh, move forward.
All right, Ms. Lawson, congratulations, welcome aboard. Anything that I can help you with, please feel free to, to ask, and I, I do it, I most certainly will. To all the other elected and re-elected officials of the county, congratulations. Um, I appreciate the scene, I'd like to, I'd like to recognize Mr. Tom, congratulations on your victory. Um, I saw, um, um, the chairman, Mr. Coachman, in, in the audience today. And for the first time, if I'm not mistaken, the first African-American, uh, pro-bate judge for the county was here.
A woman.
No woman, no female. I would certainly, uh, would certainly like to, um, thank her for coming and participating in the meeting. Um, I like Dr. Johnson wants to see, uh, we wanna see the movement, forward movement in this county. We realize that we can't have everything right away, but when the movement is stagnant, and, and, and we try, we have tried on this board to address some of those issues that Dr. Johnson, um, brought up. Um, we, we have had ideas trying to help everybody, you know? Um, all ideals, um, it takes five votes. And when you bring up an idea, that's democracy. Sometimes you win, sometimes you lose. Um, we would like to have everything, um, give wrapped and, and handed to us, seven million dollars was. It was gift wrapped, it was handed to us. So we are the stewards of that money. I was real big on the quaratics, um, but five votes were, were not there, so we went another way. Um, if it's too late to turn, uh, the minutes will tell us as, in the workshop, as we go, you know, exactly what we voted on. But I most certainly hope that, uh, we can do better, particularly since Dr. Johnson has brought up the issue of the, uh, children playing in arenas that are not safe. We can most certainly do better than that, uh, even if we have to back up and, and correct that problem. Other than that, um, I'm looking forward to, uh, another year of serving on the board and working with you guys, and hopefully we can come to some consistence, uh, consistency in government.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to say good evening to everyone present, and to those who may be, after this meeting, watching by social media. I want to say that I took the privilege of writing down what I needed to say. And one of the things I need to say is I really thank God for this opportunity to serve on this council. It's different sitting out there, and then having to make firm decisions up here. And I do appreciate this opportunity, and I'm thankful. So, Ms. Plato, hats off to you. I thank you so much for, um, you're looking at your time and your season, and thanking God, because it was God, that my season is now on this council. But I want to take this time as a point of privilege to thank my son, and recognize my son, Stargill. He took twelve hours of drive to come here, to be sure that I, um, was represented today, and I thank him so much. Um, he's my, I can't say he's my baby, but he's my firstborn. And, uh, thank him so much, and I wanna thank, um, my aunt also, who stood with me, a relative. But I wanted to reach out and thank my church members and my friends and family members who did come to witness this, and I do appreciate it. My daughter and my grandchildren, and my daughter-in-law are not here, but they definitely said, and my sisters, two sisters, Sarah and Mary, I'll have those two, and, and I have all, a lot of relatives, but I really want to bring their name up to say that. I'm blessed that I have family and people who really say, Pearl, I'm proud of you, my mom, I'm proud of you. I also want to say that I'm very grateful and thankful, uh, gentlemen, that I'm here on this council. But I want to make a bold statement, I pray for the day that, uh, more women can serve on this council. I know, I'm, I'm just saying, it's time, it's all, just, you know, you've been the only one, and then you're not the first. I'm not the first, and I thank God I'm not gonna be the last, I'm expected to be. But I would like to also say that it will be good to see more women on boards and commission, and on this council, to be freely, uh, have voice, your opinion. And I want, uh, to also to, uh, let everyone know, for me, that as a council person, I am going to do my best to, uh, to work with each of you, because it's a learning task with each of you. Even though I may have sat out there and said, oh, I know them, or we may, whatever, but it's a different ballgame, working with persons as council persons to person. But I want everyone to know, for Pearl Lawson, I'm a person that I wanna learn as much as I possibly can. I want to know policy and procedures, I wanna know the budget. I wanna make sure that I am putting forth the effort to learn all that I can, and I hope that we all will do that, because all of us can learn from each other. I want, if, even if I have to say, uh, Mr. Chairman, I may have a conversation with a lawyer, I am going to make sure that I learn policies and procedures, and what this county, how we are governed. But I also want to say to, uh, anyone, for all of us, that we want to, if we want to lead this county, and we want, and we're saying that we wanna address the needs and concerns of everyone. When our, um, constituents come to the floor, I'm gonna keep a notebook, I'm gonna write down the concerns and, and, and bring that up. Because don't wanna let anyone think you're just dismissing them, I don't want to do that. But as for me, I know that, uh, when it's easy, and things are going along smoothly, easy, it's easy to vote and say yes. But when the times of controversy and challenges, and how are we gonna stand with each other? Are we gonna be at each other's throat and be dead? and be deadlocked and not move, that is not going to be me. I'm going to ask God to direct my decision-making. I'm going to stand on what I believe in and hope and pray that I'm doing the best thing for the people who voted me, whether it was one vote, 10 votes, 40 votes, or 100 votes, I'm elected as that person. And I like what a friend of mine, a well-known person in the state, said, that if you do right, you can sleep tight at night. So I'm going to ask the Lord, I am going to do right, and I thank you.
The, well, you know, looking forward to working with you side by side. Thank board member Tom and the chairman, you know, out of y'all's busy schedule for to come and sit down, and I'll return the favor. See if they ain't done on the school board side. I try not to intervene, but if y'all take time out to come see us, council board member, I do the same, I would do the same.
Church member. He's here, church member. And former board member, man, too, they're here for support.
The songwriter, songwriter once always said, a change going to come. And 2022 was a year of trials and tribulation. 23, a change need to come. There's, it's amazing, when we don't have money, we can find things to do. Then we get money, we don't know what to do with it. And I think that one of the, we got kind of sidetracked as a board, I'm just speaking on myself, that we were worried about tourists. But tourists comes and go, we here. We got, we have to reassess ourselves and say, what can we do for the people that is here that they can be comfortable, they can be happy, they can say, yeah, come to Clayo, come to benefit, come to Marlboro County, you know, but we, sometimes we're focused and got sidetracked of having people stop in. But they go spend money, hour, hour and a half, they gone. We here all day, every day, 24/7, 365. Like Sheriff Man Neil said, we ain't going nowhere. Born and raised in Clayo, and many of us here, born and raised in Marlboro County, and we, it's not too late to make a change. It's not too late for us to reevaluate some of the ideas. We're not going to scrape the whole slate, but some of the things that is good, but something can be better. When people start hearing what we planning on doing, that when we get the conversation in our ear. Why y'all going to do this? Why y'all going to do that? Beforehand, nobody saying that. So we as a council had to move forward from what we thought members want, or people want, but it's up to Marlboro County citizens, tell us, talk to us, call us, you know, come to the meeting, voice your opinion before we move forward too far, you know? There's so many things we can do, and everybody hit on some certain points. We all good in our own skill sets. Some people got a great gift for gab, you know, and some people just, I don't say that, I just work on. So everybody got something to bring to the table. I would love for us to, we met with the city, we met with the leg authorities, school board, y'all on deck. We would love to get with y'all, and because your students is our citizens, so we all need to work together. You know, school board, y'all got whatever y'all have, but we continue to collaborate and say, look, this could help our students here at Marlboro County and the middle school and so forth. You know, let it get to the table, and then we can come say, now it's time to work, to turn dirt, to make something happen, so everybody can benefit and flourish, you know? We getting longer to do for y'all, everybody getting longer to do. So we got worried about our kids, our grandkids, our visitors that come in, they want internet, they want something to do, they want somewhere to go eat, them the three things that everybody want on a regular basis. But I say, change going to come, so if we need to make change, we don't need to be, they want a deadlock, you know, somebody got, we got to come out this deadlock, because they're not going to get pretty.
Good chair. It's all you.
All right. Ms. Lawson, once again, welcome.
Thank you.
Great to have you up here. Sheriff, thank you for your hard work to keep us safe and for your extra efforts and the grants, the overtime grant. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second? Anybody have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right.